I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. And let's see, roll call is first on the agenda.
Councilmember Murray?
Present.
Councilmember Ryan?
Here.
Mayor Protem Wall?
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright?
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore?
Here, attending remotely via teleconference.
Councilmember Woodard?
Councilmember Woodard asked to be excused.
Move to excuse Councilmember Woodard.
Second.
All in favor to excuse Councilmember Woodard?
Aye.
All opposed? So he is excused and now we're awaiting.
I believe Councilmember Payne Donovan is waiting to get in.
Should we wait until he's in and be a part of roll call?
It should be...
We can acknowledge him when we're able to get him in.
I think that's him.
Is that him?
This is Rory.
Okay. So...
Here.
We're in roll call. Go ahead and...
Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Attending remotely via teleconference.
That concludes roll call.
Thank you. Okay. So first on our agenda after that is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of council, just a couple of updates tonight, and a great one for the first one. One of our officers, Officer Russell, was filling up his vehicle at the fuel station. And when he was leaving, he noticed that a tree next to a house had got caught on fire and had a... from a firework. And grabbed the garden hose and put the fire out before the fire department even got there.
Hero at work.
Yeah. So we have video of that that I'll be sharing with you tomorrow. It's kind of grainy, but it's great. It's one of those services that you're driving by, you see something, you take care of it. Great thing to see. So we're very, very proud of Officer Russell. Safe routes to school is... has received... The contractors received their notice to proceed, so they will begin construction on that project in the middle of July, July 15th. And we're hoping they have all their construction days. The actual end of the contract is September 19th. We're going to do everything we can to get that project done before school starts. So, working on that. And we are sending out, as everybody's aware, the traffic alert for the 3rd of July event coming up next week and working with the residents there along Lakeview Drive so they can not only enjoy the show, but also not have to protect their parking spots. And lastly, the 66th project that is just completed and we're going to go out there and take a look at it next week or the week after. We added green bike lanes. And I'm not sure if everybody's familiar with that, but those are those protected lanes that are part of... It kind of is a protected area for people that are on bicycles throughout the community. Those are the first green bike lanes that Mount Lake Terrace has ever had. So it's going to be fun to go out and take a look at that. And that's all I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Manager. Just a question since you brought up just traffic control for the 3rd of July. I know folks oftentimes park at the transit center and head down and head back. Some years we've had shuttle service, some years we haven't. I guess I'm curious, is that something that is on deck this year or as folks are planning their trip? I guess I just want to make sure that they have clarity.
That I am not positive about, but I will get an answer for that to you.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else up there? All right. Thank you very much. Okay, so next is the introduction of the new facility supervisor and parks supervisor and park supervisor with our Recreation Parks Director Jeff Betts. Oh, there you are.
I'm over here. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, councilmembers. As mentioned, I'm Jeff Betts, Recreation Parks Director. And I have a couple of... Well, one new employee and one promoted employee to introduce to you. And so just a couple of quick comments before I call them up here. So first of all, Facility Supervisor Floyd Garrigus has been with the city for a little over 20 years now and has performed all duties which he will be supervising within the city. So, very happy to see him get promoted and already stepped in those shoes over the past month. As you know, Ken Courtmanch retired, so we split his position into two. And so these are the two employees that would be fulfilling those duties. So Floyd, come on up here. Got to say a couple of words as well. So welcome Floyd, and we look forward to all you're going to be able to do in all the facilities and introduce you to the council. Do you want to talk, say a couple of words?
Yes. I've been here for 20, a little over 20 years. In facilities, I've gone from the old city hall to the...
Interim.
Interim city hall and then back to this new city hall. So I've enjoyed my work here and I enjoy what I'm doing now. It has not been boring. We facilitated bunker tear down, which went very smooth, I thought. And we just got done with the week's shutdown, well, four days at the pool. And we actually got quite a few repairs done and we got a new sauna. Not a new sauna, but we got the wood replaced in a sauna. So if you get a chance to go look at it, it's really nice. So I look forward to being here and Mount Lake Terrace is a great place to work. Thank you.
Thank you.
So lovely. Thank you Floyd. And then Selena Williams? Has been here for all of a month, about a month now. And Selena, I'll let her say a few words as well, but she came from Bothell. So very excited to have you as well. And hopefully you're excited to be here, all the great parks that Mount Lake Terrace has. So Selena will be the park supervisor and going to be overseeing about 270 acres of park property, including all the things you already know about, of course, Ballenger Park, ball fields and trails and disc golf. So, want to say a couple of words as well?
Hi, council, mayor. This is my first time in front of a podium, so this is exciting. Like Jeff said, I'm from Bothell. I was there about five years, working my way up in the field from maintenance. Prior to that, I started and was operating my own digital design and social media company that I was running for about another five years. Super excited to be here. It's been a very productive, busy four weeks already. We hired and our seasonal just started today, actually. He will be with us until late August or September. If you see him, his name's Jake, he's awesome, say hi. But yeah, I'm super excited to be here. It's a great community. Two volunteer groups already have completed projects while I've been here. So I love the community aspect, great parks. Again, just super excited to be a part of the Mount Lake community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And would you like to talk to them right now or ask any questions? Feel free.
We got a welcome cookie.
Okay. And the last thing I wanted to say is just happy birthday, Mayor.
So does anybody want to ask questions or say anything for our new staff here? Except welcome? Anything more than welcome? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I would... Yeah, I was going to say, I was just going to say welcome. I don't have questions, but we're excited to have you here. Appreciate, you know, both, you know, taking on of new responsibilities as well as joining, you know, the team and just appreciate all of your work.
Great, thank you. Do we have... Okay, so next is the presentation of the comprehensive plan update with Senior Planner Jonathan Morales and Community and Economic Development Director Chrissy Osborne.
Good evening, Mayor Matsumoto Wright, Mayor Protem Wall, members of council, Jonathan Morales, Senior Planner. I'm joined today with Ciara Carson from OTAC, our consultant on the comprehensive plan update. So today follows a... Today's a briefing following our April 25th meeting where we went over our housing and land use elements. So the focus for today, the main focus is going over some preliminary feedback from CPAG and Planning Commission on the environment, recreation parks and open space and economic vitality element, specifically draft goals and policies. But before we get into that, did want to dive into a bit on the project status and schedule and then a community engagement update. Okay, so what we have here on the screen is an overview of our schedule. We've broken down by engagement, the element chapters, and then the draft plan, as well as at the bottom there, that bottom section is tracking the environmental impact statement process. So today we are at towards the end of June. By now, we've had a open house in March. And early June, we had a neighborhood planning workshop at the Brighton School, which was attended by, I would say about 25 to 30 members of our community at the Brighton School. We are working towards a draft plan that will be presented to the Planning Commission starting July 8th. We just wrapped up review of goals and policies with Planning Commission, so now we're developing the draft plan so we can bring it to them to start the draft plan review. And then we're working towards a Planning Commission recommendation that will be forwarded to the city council for the council to start their review process in early September. The EIS is sort of tracking the full timeline for the draft plan. It's concurrent, so it aligns with the overall draft plan adoption. And so August, that August star right there, that is a tentative August 12th public meeting for the draft environmental impact statement. And that will be here at city hall in the chambers right before our Planning Commission So what we have on the screen is engagement strategies that we've implemented that you're aware of. Just wanted to note what we've done so far. So in terms of intercept surveys and pop-ups, we've had a couple of opportunities for an intercept survey that was led by our subconsultant, the Vida Agency. That was with our local Black Indigenous POC, people of color, small businesses. And so the Vida Agency was able to reach 27 local businesses in Mount Lake Terrace. About 21 of those responded to a questionnaire that was similar to a community survey that we put out in July of 2023. Mount Lake Terrace High School students, an intercept survey was also distributed. As you're aware, we did want to have a workshop with the student body there. Unfortunately, because of the way it was aligning with the end of the school year and a lot of responsibilities that the students were finding themselves, it just didn't work out in terms of timing. So we are hopeful that we can still have a student workshop at the start of the school year. But in the meantime, we did pivot and had an intercept survey, so I believe we had about 10 responses to a questionnaire. And I believe that is still open for students to respond to. Similarly, we were hoping to have a small group discussion with a group of Latinas in Mount Lake Terrace. That is still being planned. But in the meantime, the organizer there did have informal conversations with members of that group, so we've been able to do that. Open houses and neighborhood workshops, as you're aware, we had an open house in November 2023. In March 2024, we had a suburb workshop early June 2024. A community visioning survey went out in July of 2023, which garnered about 268 responses. On our website, we do have an online open house still alive, and that's continuing to receive public comment. And in terms of meeting with boards and commissions, we did meet with the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission. We'll actually be going back to them on July 17th. And met with the Recreation Parks Advisory Commission as well on the recreation parks and open space element. And lastly, just wanted to emphasize that council did approve the formation of a comprehensive plan advisory group, which we had 10 community members participate in that effort. We met monthly from September to June of this year. And so that was about nine months, 11 meetings. And we are super grateful for their participation and a recommendation for moving forward with the draft goals and policies for all the eight elements was forwarded to Planning Commission. We do have some minor tweaks and additions that we need to incorporate, but there was unanimous approval of moving forward with those recommendations. And then I wanted to bring back the vision statement, which I believe was presented to you earlier this year. So the vision statement that we have here, this is in draft form, but it's based on community input as well as workshopping with the Planning Commission. So this is the vision statement that we're proposing to include as part of this comprehensive plan update. So, let's see. I think there is time for any feedback on this, on the wording of this, so I'll just read it out real quick. "Mount Lake Terrace is a welcoming and inclusive community with safe, connected and varied neighborhoods, thriving activity centers, diverse housing and economic opportunities, and an expansive network of parks and recreation programming that celebrates and supports diversity, arts and culture, and engages in a responsible environmental stewardship." Any questions?
Is that a hand up? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Generally, it looks good. I haven't had too much time to think about it as far as feedback, other than the word programming versus the word programs. Just curious if there's, I would guess, intent behind the word programming rather than using
Yeah. In my mind, I think recreation programming is sort of developing different programs that speak to the needs and the wants of the community. So different opportunities.
As opposed to what programs would be? I guess to me, programs is just an easier word, but if there's a clear intent behind programming, I'm good with programming too. It's just wordsmithing at this point, I guess, right? Sorry.
In the spirit, in the spirit of wordsmithing, I don't believe that there is intentionality behind either programming or programs in this context. The verbiage here has been taken from the existing council, council goal statement, which has been massaged by both CPAG and Planning Commission as part of this process and also shown to the community. So if there is any direction here on clarifying the language, I think that can be done.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'll ask the question since, I don't know, maybe this is a silly question, but so we have a vision statement associated with our comprehensive plan, and then we're going to talk in two agenda items about our council vision statement, which has evolved in a way that looks a little different than this. I guess I'm curious if they reconcile at some point? Should they reconcile at some point? I guess maybe folks who have... I'm not sure. I guess I'm not sure how things typically work in terms of like if a comprehensive plan typically has a different vision statement than the general vision statement of the
I don't know, Carolyn, maybe if you have or Jeff, if you have thoughts on this, but the vision statement here for the comprehensive plan, is that 20-year vision? Whereas I think your council vision as part of the strategic plan is more of a shorter term, if we revisit it, but...
Yeah. So this vision statement for the comprehensive plan is specific to, you know, as it says, parks, activities, those kind of things. Our vision statement for the city overall also includes things like policing and code enforcement and financial stewardship, you know, those kind of things. So it's more, this is a little bit more narrow. The broader vision statement encompasses everything we do.
Check. Okay, so they are different and I don't have to try to reconcile that in my head. I appreciate it. Okay. So vision statement here is just for the comprehensive plan, but thank you.
I don't see any hands going up up there. Mayor Protem Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to follow up and to clarify, I like it. I think you've done a great job. I think it does help narrow the more expansive statement that we've had in the past down. I think it hits all the key points. Again, my only preference would be programs versus programming, but good either way. I like it. Well done. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right.
So with that, we'll get started on reviewing the element draft goals and policies and feedback we've heard.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. Thank you for having me here tonight to speak to the goals and for the environment, for the recreation parks and open space element and the economic vitality element. Our purpose here tonight is to give an update to you all on how these elements have incorporated the feedback that we've received from the advisory group as well as from Planning Commission. So for each of the elements, what has been developed is a purpose statement, which sort of outlines in a broad sense the overall goal of that element and how it relates back to the vision statement. So you'll find that for all the elements, this purpose statement has been developed. And that again is based on feedback we've received from Planning Commission. For the environment element, five goals have been developed. Number one, to protect natural resource areas and critical areas. Number two, to take actions to promote environmental resiliency. Number three, to plan for climate and environmental protections. Number four, to minimize waste and promote the conservation of resources. Five, actively, and five, to actively engage with the community partners, promote education on the environment. Some of the ways that we have used Planning Commission and advisory group feedback is really to rewrite some of the goals from our initial draft to be more reflective of that feedback. So what we've done is clarified and consolidated all goals that are really related to some of that require state law or regulation around critical area protections. So you'll see a lot of those policies under goal one. We've also clarified goals and policies related to climate and emissions and proposed policies that support future climate action planning. So goals around resiliency, policies regarding how the city might work with, work on resiliency are under goal two. And then under goal three, there are policies for environmental and climate, sorry, environmental and climate policy. So, you know, setting greenhouse gas emission goals perhaps. And then we also have, number four is a goal that was added based on the feedback we've received from our advisory group. We had lots of conversations about what it means for, you know, conservation of resources, whether that is composting, managing our existing waste, water, energy. So we have established a new goal within the element that kind of has policies related to those topics. We've also clarified, you know, different ways that the city could provide or actively engage with the community and partners on education on the environment. This was a lot of strong feedback we received from advisory group, so you'll see a lot of policy support for that type of work. Also, other ways, because we are aware, you know, as this comp plan is being developed, there also is this separate process for those strategic goals. So there are certain areas where we have made sure to at least reference some of those other feedback that we've received from council. So you'll see policies within the environment that refer back to overall city functions, such as the capital facilities element, so talking about leveraging different city resources in order to build infrastructure, looking at maintaining public health and safety, you know, hazard mitigation, emergency management shows up in environment, and you'll also see it in capital facilities, and then planning for climate and environmental protections with environmental justice. So some of those topics, as they get tied into overall city process, we have policies here under environment to cover. Are there any questions on the environment element?
Are there any? I don't see any on the... Mayor Protem Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I do have some other questions, more general, that I guess I'm holding off on, but while we're on the environment section, I did have a question on how are we addressing climate and recognizing that we're going to be required to add a climate element in the future? I'm assuming we're, it sounds like we're not doing that at this time, but we're kind of incorporating most of the goals and actions and strategies into the number three here? Is that kind of the...
Yes. So the, some of those legal requirements from the state for every city to have a climate element, we've incorporated a lot of that guidance here into the environment element. That climate element is to be kind of split into two sub-elements. One that focuses on resiliency and a second sub-element that focuses on greenhouse gas emissions. So as you look through the proposed goal structure with a goal two that focuses on resiliency and a goal three that focuses on climate emissions and environmental protections, we've set up sort of a structure where as the plan gets updated to meet those future climate requirements, they can get fit into this environment element, or if the city chooses to go in a different direction, they can. But we're setting up the framework to meet those future requirements here.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to add, I'd like to thank the city of Mount Lake Terrace for having our disposal company that comes once a week utilizing the landfill, not landfill, but land recyclable, not recyclables, compost and yard waste, that's it. Because we got every other week. But it's really nice that we could take that, use it, and have some compost. So thank you.
And you will see quite a, well, we, you know, these are all, we're approaching all elements as their own individual element, but understanding there's a lot of topical tie-ins between them. So as we get to, you know, the elements regarding capital facilities of those utilities, you see more specific policies on directly relating to those service providers and how they are affecting environmental resiliency. So there are, it's, we're covering in two different places, so you'll see a lot of the connection there.
Okay. Anyone else? So we can go on to the next.
All right. So on recreation parks and open space, this element has received feedback from our advisory group as well as Planning Commission and the ARPAQ group. So they have all provided feedback on the goals and policies. And where we've ended up is five goals here under recreation parks and open space. One, to provide these parks and services. Two, to provide a variety of recreational opportunities. Three, to promote connectivity between these places as well as key community destinations. Four, to provide these services to provide opportunities for community connections. And five, to... And five, to understand and recognize the coordination between protecting our natural environment and our park space. Some of the key ways that we have integrated that feedback from our different advisory groups is, I think really under Goal Number Three there, the connect, the supporting the connectivity of the city through its park system is recognizing that, you know, our parks are a key part of our transportation system, whether it is the actual park space itself or our trail system. So there are key, there are connections and policies within the parks element that relate back to our transportation element as well when it comes to that, the connectivity throughout the city. Also, you know, evaluating or supporting for community gathering spaces. So you'll find policies under Goal Two as well as under Goal Four on providing a variety of recreational opportunities as well as programs and looking for those opportunities to provide, you know, city events or other opportunities to create some of those community connections as well as, you know, the tie-in between parks activity, those events as well as the economic vitality element as these, these assets of the city do tie together. So the policies in both elements are supporting some of those overall goals for creating, you know, a fun, vibrant environment within the city, both in our public spaces as well as in our commercial areas. We've also, under Goal One, you know, that just providing public space for parks, recreation facilities and open spaces is putting policies in here to support future RPOS master planning so that department functional plan that will more guide the day-to-day, you know, acquisition of parks. And so adding in policies around, you know, evaluating equity when it comes to acquiring park space and other aspects of, you know, making sure that people have access. So you'll, you'll find ways that we have sort of integrated some of those topics throughout the element. I think, yes. And then what you'll also find here, I think under Goal, Goal Two on providing those recreational programs and Goal Four, providing community connections, is an emphasis on engaging with the community, both as part as understanding what kind of programs need to happen, what kind of spaces are needed, partnerships for supporting our park system as well as enhancing it and growing those city events. So that engagement and partnerships is also a thread that you find throughout the element. Do we have any questions on Recreation Parks and Open Space?
I don't see any hands up over there, so I guess Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it looks great because I don't see water features. And I reckon, one of my questions late, that I was saving for later was, and I recognize that a lot of this, what I'm going to say next is, is related to, more related to potentially actions and strategies that will kind of fill in, in, under here, which, you know, again, I think the overall proposed goals hit the mark and are great. But all serious, all kidding aside on water features, seriously though, placemaking is critically important. And I'm going to be touching more on that when we get to the vision and goals discussion. But this is one of the key places that I think we want to highlight placemaking. Oh, night Marcus, where, does that fit in somewhere here too, right? Live entertainment, just, you know, pop-up entertainment, food trucks, things like that. I think utilizing our public space and art in our public space is another thing that I want to make sure we get highlighted. Again, I, that may not, I, I recognize that a lot of that can be directed more towards the actions underneath the proposed goals. So I'll be looking for those things, but if they, but if they don't fit in, if we don't, if I don't, if I'm not seeing those things in, in some of the action statements that we have when that comes out, I want to be incorporating that somehow into where we're going here. That's it. Thank you for now.
All right. Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. In listening to Mayor Protem, I think, to go back to the conversation about programs versus programming, I think some of the things that, at least in how I view things, some of the things you're talking about feel like programming from my perspective versus a program. And so maybe that is a good, I guess, reason to perhaps leave what was in. And as long as we are, you know, I think, again, I like our proposed goals where they are. They, I think it looks, it looks good and feels fairly inclusive of the things that I had hoped to see. And I would just add, I think, to the, I think one of the things that is top of mind for me, and when we think about serving the needs of all of our residents, both current and future, is just really thinking particularly about ages and ensuring that we are meeting needs for, you know, the whole spectrum from, you know, the, the youngest of our residents to the very oldest, so, and everybody in between.
I wanted to add that actually programming was very specific because it was both programs in the traditional term and programming spaces. And so there is that thought behind that, just FYI, but exactly that.
Anyone else? Okay.
Just real quick, to Mayor Protem Wall's comment, there are policies that we've developed that are sort of in our, we have some in recreation element, but there's also in our economic vitality element. We have a lot of those policies related to placemaking and activation of space. Yeah.
What you'll find that is in the Recreation Parks and Open Space element, we have policies such as using our Recreation Parks opportunities to attract visitors as well as hosting and growing city provided indoor and outdoor opportunities. Let's see, we have, you know, leveraging the unique aspects of our public spaces for economic sustainability, you know, catering to all ages and abilities. So there's, there's policies in parks that support using parks for these aspects. And then what you'll see in economic vitality is that it's part of the overall economic vitality goal to support all of these events regardless of kind of where they show up, whether it is on public land or working with, you know, partners to utilize other space.
We'll move on.
So on economic vitality, we have three proposed goals under this element. One, to cultivate a resilient economy by diversifying and expanding opportunity, economic opportunity within the city. Number two, to strengthen the community and grow prosperity through supporting our local businesses as well as entrepreneurship. And three, promoting a distinct environmental, regional identity driven by connected network of mixed-use neighborhood centers and a vibrant town center. So the wording there has been tweaked a little bit by CPAG. That was some of the comments that we got last night. So I know that these slides are slightly out of date based on that most recent feedback. You know, what we've really heard from both CPAG as well as the Planning Commission on this topic is there's been a lot of focus on town center and that will continue to be a big focus of the city's economic development strategy. But as you look at the 20-year plan, there was interest in seeing a diversification in the investment in business and amenities throughout the city. So looking at sort of our other commercial areas, sort of what new commercial areas might we want to see to provide more of a, of a network of places that are walkable to residents? So you'll see within the, the plan that there's language beyond just town center, but also referencing other places within the city as well. You know, also what we've heard is a lot of interest in the city taking a more active role in recruitment and marketing for business development, whether or not that is supporting incubator or incentive programs or coordinating with the Chamber of Commerce and we're having dedicated staff. But it was, it's very much was an interest to both groups to see more active engagement with the community on business development. And then also just a thread that you'll see throughout the document is this importance of accessibility and connectivity. That was a bolded statement in the vision statement because connectivity has really come up again and again and again as we've had these conversations is a really key piece of what people would like to see out of the city over the next 20 years. So there's verbiage around accessibility and walking and biking between our commercial areas throughout the economic vitality element, but definitely under that Goal Three. And then there's also will be, the policies within the plan will support the implementation of the strategic plan. And what we've done is we want to just make sure that we're clarifying the role of that, you know, shorter-term, five-year strategic plan versus this is sort of our 20-year vision for what economic development looks like within the city. So I think that is sort of my overview of economic vitality. We have questions?
Do we have any questions or comments? Mayor Protem? Oh, no, I didn't see you.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you. I guess I just, I did have a question just kind of about how, so I love the idea of promoting a distinctive regional identity for, for us. And also I guess would be curious where sort of, I mean, I guess, I assume that is for Mountain Lake Terrace. But I guess in terms of thinking about kind of collaboration, you know, with, you know, whether it is neighboring communities or other kind of, you know, folks, potential partners in, like, does that, do, are there goals in number one in terms of diversifying and expanding our economic opportunities that incorporate that? Or I guess I want to make sure that we are not only like, you know, working to ensure that we have an identity that we are sharing out with others, but that we are also, you know, leveraging partners and, you know, partnering with our neighbors to promote kind of more broadly our, our area of the world. And so, you know, particularly as we all get light-railed and things like that, I think there's a lot of shared opportunity and interest in, you know, kind of conversations around that. So I guess I'm curious if that falls into these somewhere?
Yes.
Okay.
I, just looking through a list of policies here, we have a lot of that covered. You'll see policies on leveraging our, our planning and our public investments to retain, expand and attract businesses within the city, strengthening our local and regional partnerships to attract economic opportunity and then supporting emerging clusters, coordinating on workforce development with our educational partners, so whether that's local community colleges or high schools. We also have policies on, let's see, I think that, and those are all going to be under sort of that number one, so looking at sort of how we are cultivating that diversified economy. As you look towards, you know, supporting local businesses and entrepreneurship, there's definitely, there's been a lot of conversations on how the city can work with the chamber or other local incubation programs. I think there's been some local examples that have been thrown out. So there's definitely partnerships that could be leveraged there. And then our number one policy under Goal Three on promoting that regional identity, distinct identity is to identify, develop and implement a unique brand and strategic marketing program for economic development in the city to emphasize the unique characteristics. So, because I think it's, it's building Mountain Lake Terrace up because it's a very cool community. There's a lot, a lot of cool, unique assets here, but also recognizing that we're not doing it alone. It's also those partnerships.
Hundred percent. No, that's wonderful. Thank you for expanding and that all sounds great.
All right. Now Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And actually, I think you've answered most of my questions. Obviously, I'm going to be looking forward to the details, the policies, actions and strategies, performance measures. I'm going to get ahead of myself on the next slide and ask that question. When will that be available? When can you make that available to us?
So we will have another briefing in August, and I think at that point we can have the draft goals and policies as they're developed at this moment to you for, in advance of that meeting.
Okay. That'd be great. Obviously, the sooner the better for me. I'd love to get my hands on some of that quickly because that'll help, I think, answer a lot of my questions and a lot of the, not concerns, challenges, issues that I'm excited that we are going to be addressing over the next 20 years. But, but you mentioned, my, my primary question was how, how much does this reflect on recognizing there's a difference between the, the strategy, economic development strategy we've got and the 20-year plan for economic vitality? But I want to make sure they are reflecting each other. So it sounds like we're, that is incorporated. So we'll look forward to seeing more on that. I was going to ask about, or ask about ensuring that we're not only addressing the businesses but the jobs and the workforce development. Sounds like that's covered in there, so excited to see more about that. And I appreciate you coming up with the region, the South County Regional. Like, because interestingly, we just had our regional collaboration meeting on Tuesday, and one of the issues was exactly that. Kind of creating a brand for the South County region, particularly related to tourism and the fact that it was the World Cup, some, is coming up in 2026. We're going to be attracting the world's attention to this area. And so we should be prepared to market how great this area is, this great opportunity for us. We want to make sure we're taking advantage of that and working not only for our own brand identity, which I think is important, having Mountain Lake Terrace specific and having a specific strategy for how we're going to attract the kind of economic development we want to see here in this, this community, but also a little bit broader approach and working together with our partners to brand this region as a whole and take advantage of the opportunity that's coming. So I think that looks good. Again, I'm just looking forward to the details. Thank you. But the, again, assuming that it all kind of fits together with the economic development strategy, I think this looks great.
And I just want to say that I like the fact that we're looking at the other parts of town and not just one because we need to start working on all these sub-areas. Otherwise, we're going to get another car wash where we don't want one. So, and that, that is a nice wake-up call for us. So let's start working on many of these others. And eventually, if we can have within a half a mile walking distance to some, someplace where people can just go, not only to a park, but to, to get fresh produce in the summertime and things like that, and just have these little pockets all over the place. That probably will be a really, really livable city if we could do that. So that's all I have. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next one.
Thank you.
Which is comments.
All right. So I think we just had a general comment slide. So the next portion of our presentation tonight is to, yes?
Do we have questions? Okay.
Thank you. I'm going to take advantage of that pause in, in between to ask my other questions or other things. One is, so one was again, as the sooner we, the better on getting the graphs of the policies, actions, strategies and performance measures. Two is, have, are, have we submitted a draft or are we, I assume we were planning to submit a draft of, of the plan to PSRC? Great. We were just talking about that during our executive board meeting earlier today, about the process. I'll be reporting on that later. But just wanted to make sure that we're going to be tapping into the resources that PSRC has available to review early and give any feedback so that we don't get caught off guard on anything. And then can I get a copy of the previous comp plan?
Adopted in 17.
Yeah. The previously adopted comp plan would be great. Just, and really all I want is the, the goals and policies. I don't need the full, all the details for each section. And then a final note on the engagement strategy. I, I mean, I think we've done a, a very good job of, first time out of the gate, you know, really working hard to engage the community. I did, for future, just wanted to make note, you know, a lot of others are doing a lot of experimenting right now. And there are some great ideas that are coming out of a lot of other communities. Just wanted to encourage us to be able to be tapping into that. We're going to probably be in, in our future Snoke County meetings and I know with PSRC, we have the Vision Awards. Bellevue was one that we awarded a Vision Award for community, their community engagement. I know a couple, several others submitted some great ideas of what they've done, they did to engage the community. Encourage us to take a look at that. King County was another one. There are a couple of others that I'd be happy to share with you when, when we get around to that point of re-looking at our engagement strategies, which will come in handy for our. which will come in handy for our vision and goals as well. But there's a lot of great ideas of how others, other jurisdictions have engaged their communities as well, and I think that for going forward, there's some some things we can learn from others on. But I think that was it for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, continue.
Fantastic. So as we move to the next portion of our presentation, this will be covering and giving council a briefing on the the purpose and the draft goals, the transportation utilities and capital facilities elements. We will be coming back at the next briefing to do a more in-depth review of these, similarly to how we've just done for the previous three elements. So if there's any questions on the scope of these, we can talk through them, but the the questions and discussion on the goals and the policies will be at a later date. So the transportation element is absolutely one of the key elements within the comprehensive plan, guiding the development of that city's transportation network. Some of the key aspects of this new update will be focusing not just on vehicle travel, but also on non-motorized travel, active transportation, so people who are walking, rolling, biking, riding transit, as well as driving. Also focus on freight travel, or not a focus, but at least an acknowledgement of the importance of freight travel to the city economic development, as well as just servicing the people and businesses who are here, and also leveraging new technologies, on whether or not that's in system management technology when it comes to transportation or other aspects. The goals here in the policies will guide future decisions on how the city prioritizes different types of projects, especially for transportation investments, and make recommendations on some of the key improvements that might need to be made over the next 20 years to build out that full transportation network. Next slide. So our draft goals for transportation, we have five. I think in the 2015 plan, there were 11. So we have consolidated and refined these quite a bit to propose what you see here. So number one, to enhance safety and connectivity of Mount Lake Terrace's transportation systems for all users regardless of mobility. Number two, to increase climate resiliency by promoting sustainability, reducing pollution, and supporting clean air and water. Number three, to provide those multimodal opportunities for people who are driving, walking, bicycling, and using transit, so looking at all of our modes and including subsections on our bike networks, as well as our pedestrian networks, supporting those, the development of those transportation networks. Number four, making transportation decisions consistent with community and regional needs, including great mobility and effectively managing and maintaining our transportation assets. So that's kind of our overview of transportation. I guess, any questions here? Or I don't, we're not, we will have more detail at a future meeting, so.
I'll have more than two.
Sounds good.
I'll wait until then.
All right. So the utilities element is related to all of the services and utilities provided to residents in Mount Lake Terrace by services other than the city. So these are third-party utilities, so electricity, which comes from Snohomish County Public Utility District, natural gas from Hugues Sound Energy, telecommunication comes from a variety of different sources, and waste management, the current provider of which is Waste Management. So these are just sort of at a high level, the topics that are covered under the utilities element. We have a couple of goals here, which are currently, you know, in review from SEVAG and Planning Commission, but what we're showing here tonight is goals on working with those third-party providers to ensure that they are providing adequate services and technologies for residents. So because those providers themselves are in charge of having their own plans for how they're going to, would keep up with growth and demand, but it really is a coordination piece the city provides to those services so that they know what is going on, ensuring those utility uses and infrastructure are compatible with land uses, the surrounding environment. So the recognition of, you know, changing environment when it comes to our energy usage, as well as how do we integrate these facilities into our existing environments and keep up with, you know, building codes and things like that. And then number three, coordinating with third-party service providers on timing and availability of service of projects. Again, that importance of coordination, especially when it comes to construction, such as with roadways. So that's a lot of what you see here. And what we, this is, this this element really just put an emphasis on the proactive coordination and education on these topics with the city providing, you know, a leading role or an example-setting role with these different providers.
Oh, sorry about that. Go ahead.
Thank you. Quick question on this one. Would this be a place that we would put, I guess, to your point about the city being proactive, you know, some of those partners, we don't have options around, some of them we do, I guess, in terms of making sure that we are looking at the full kind of landscape of options available to our residents to ensure that their needs are met in the most cost-effective way possible? I guess, is that part of this body of work in the, like, I guess, having some sort of goal around assessing the third-party service providers that we are using? Like, I guess, because the first one is working with third-party service providers, but I guess I'm just curious in terms of like, it is not, some of those are, I mean, again, Snohomish County PUD is our electricity provider, but telecommunications or waste management, I mean, there's areas where we have some opportunity, I guess, particularly thinking about waste management and, you know, ensuring that we are working in goals around thoughtfully, you know, assessing whoever we are entering agreements in that affect our residents, both in terms of service and cost. So if that is, I guess, if that's part of this, great, and if it's, I don't know, better-suited somewhere else, that's great, too. I guess I just want to make sure that that doesn't feel like it fits naturally under one of these, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Good feedback. Within the policies and the goals themselves, none of the providers are named. They are referenced as energy providers or waste management providers, so it is very general in the policy language, but I think that the feedback is noted, and we'll make sure that that is incorporated in some way.
Okay.
All right. So wrapping up our utilities conversation, the last element within the comprehensive plan is capital facilities. So this is providing goals and policies regarding the physical facilities and services run by the city or our public partners to provide facilities for long-term public need. So the facilities and utilities run by city services include water service, sanitary sewer service, stormwater, recreational parks and open space, transportation, our civic spaces, and police and public safety. Other facilities that are coordinated and with our local jurisdictions that are also listed here are our library facilities, as well as fire and medical services. There is noted in this element references to parks and references to transportation, but they are minimal because they are the focus of their own elements, but we do want to include information here just because they are a key part of the services the city provides. And then on our next slide, so our draft goals currently in development for capital facilities are, one, to provide adequate public facilities for public need. Number two, to provide efficient and cost-effective capital facilities, so having efficient services. Number three, to ensure consistency with our land use and environment elements. This is something that, the language on these is in, continues to be refined, but making sure that, you know, as we provide facilities for public need, that we are aligning with all of the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, so bringing back those goals on connectivity, bringing back those goals on equity and, you know, sound fiscal management, so it's kind of, and sustainability, it's kind of all tied back into this goal here. Goal four, on maintaining and planning future capital investments with sound fiscal management, so, you know, those policies on how are we paying for things and aligning, again, with city council goals. And five, plan for and provide effective emergency management and health and public safety services and facilities. So speaking a bit to, you know, you know, the city isn't, isn't providing itself a lot of these services, but it can coordinate with partners and partner agencies on striving to make those, those, I guess, amenities available where appropriate. So any thoughts or questions here?
I don't see any hands going up online, and I don't see any.
I got the, I got the message that we're getting more in-depth on this later, so I'm reserving my
Okay. All right, we can continue.
All right. Well, I do believe that that does wrap us up with our briefing today on the update of the comprehensive plan, goals, and policies, and I believe I'm passing this back over to Jonathan to give you an update on next steps.
Yes, so our next council briefing will be August 22nd, and that'll be focused on the transportation, wait, yeah, transportation, capital facilities, and utilities element. Sorry, economic vitality shouldn't be on here. In terms of our draft plan review process, we are kicking that off with Planning Commission on July 8th, going over the introduction to that process, as well as the introductory chapter of the element. July 22nd, we'll be reviewing the draft environmental impact statement. You'll see that this is prior to when it will actually be published for public review and comment, an agency comment. So this is sort of giving a preliminary look at that with Planning Commission. August 12th and 26th, we will be bringing the draft, the plan elements to Planning Commission for review, and then we are targeting September 9th for a public hearing and recommendation forwarded to council and tentative schedule for council adoption process. We're kicking that off. If all goes well with the recommendation by Planning Commission, September 12th, we'll start that formal review process, continue that discussion on 26th, and then target a public hearing for adoption by council on October 16th. In terms of the draft EIS, so again, publishing that July 24th, we will be having a public meeting, which is required. That'll be here in council chambers. Right now, we're targeting August 12th for that. Yeah, and then city council dates are tentative, those dates may change, or there might be a need to add an additional meeting in that timeframe, so. Any questions?
Okay, I don't see any hands going up up there.
Well, we'll also be at Tour de Terrace as part of the city booth, getting public comment, and I found out today, we may be down at the Sound Transit opening as well August 30th. So we'll keep you posted, but we're trying to get out there and get as much input on our documents as we possibly can, so.
Are you prepared to add more meetings to the Planning Commission?
We can see how that goes. I think we set this up where the meetings we do have on the books now, I think, is is a good enough amount of meetings. In terms of, we've already gone through review discussion, goals and policies for each element. So right now, it's just bringing the draft plan to them. Yeah.
Did you have questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I mean, just, sorry, I was, for the record, I was asking about the potentially additional meetings for the Planning Commission, and the reason I suggest that is, I mean, you know, you've given a very good, high-level overview of where we are, but I know the Planning Commission, and I know I, and I'm sure the rest of the council is going to be very interested in the details, and it may take more than a few meetings to get through those details. And so we may need to add some, I mean, stuff to, I'm not encouraging the Planning Commission to add more meetings, but I think we need to be ready.
Yeah.
Being, having come from the Planning Commission and knowing how in the weeds we can get, I'd just be prepared, is all I'm saying.
Yeah, and please realize that the Planning Commission has been in the weeds all along. So we've been taking things directly from the SEPEG to the Planning Commission, so they have been fundamental in reshaping the goal language and all the policy language of the plan as we went along. That was the intent, is that they would be working on this throughout the process, and so they've done that. This is just putting it all together, when it all comes together after the work they've been doing on it, and then reshaping it where they need to or tweaking it where they need to. So essentially, they've been working on it since last fall and getting stuff brought to them all along. So just rest assured, this isn't the first time people are looking at any of these documents in the Planning Commission.
And I appreciate that. What I'm, I guess where I'm going with this is, has anyone seen the policies yet?
Yes.
So we do have the draft policies?
We do.
Available, so I can get a copy of that?
Yeah, you can. I mean, we can show you, it's all public information, so we can give you all of the work, and we actually have it in a form of where you can see every SEPEG comment and every Planning Commission comment per every policy, and we'd be happy to share that.
And action steps as well.
Yeah. So they've, they went through every single policy, every single Planning Commissioner.
Okay, great. No, that's, I'm relieved to hear that and know that, because that, that's where I was going with, I mean, them, if they were going to get just a few meetings to do that, then that, we're going to get behind. But if they are, if you guys have been doing that all along with the Planning Commission, great, I'd just like to be able to see the policies as well.
Yeah, yeah, we've been taking content each Planning Commission meeting, so twice a month, in addition to the monthly CPAG meeting, so they've been developed to the form where now we have a draft plan to present.
Glad to hear it. Look forward to seeing it. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? I don't see anyone up there. All right. So we have a lot of work ahead of us, still. All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you. I didn't think we were going to make it before December, but we will. Well, we have to, we don't have a choice.
But there's that, plus we got the budget.
Yeah, right. Okay, so next is the review and vote on the revised council vision and strategic, strategic plan with, plan goals with our city deputy city manager, Carolyn Hope.
And yeah, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protam, members of council. I'm just going to start off, as we did last time, with just a broad overview of our new goals. As you all know, you met earlier this year in a retreat on a Saturday and spent a lot of time refining, looking at this language, and considering what it means for our future and how it directs or will direct our work over the next five to six years. So we looked at the goals, and we've, we're moving toward an area where we have four major goals, and then actions and strategies, as we were just discussing as part of the comp plan, underneath that. So our four major goals are growing our vibrant community, and you can see the the statement under that, an active and dynamic city where arts, culture, and diversity thrive. We also have responsible governments to ensure the desired level of service, which is how we provide service to our residents here and folks who call this place home, and striving for cost efficiency, which you also heard, that's a common thread throughout both documents we've talked about this evening. And then, an informed and engaged community, and taking Mayor Protam's comments to heart, you know, there are always better ways that we can do things and improve the way that we communicate. We do do everything we can right now, but we definitely want to get out there and see more people, talk to more people, and make sure we understand what their desires and concerns are. And then, lastly, but certainly not least, is the environmental sustainability and resiliency goal, and that's minimizing climate impact. So again, that common thread between those documents So, again, that common thread between those documents is what we're trying to achieve. So, with that, I'd like to pass it over to our Deputy City Manager for the remainder of the presentation.
All right, thank you, and good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam and council members. I think just before we move on from the goal statements, oops, I didn't mean to do that. Let me get to the right spot here again. You have a lot of different documents. Oh, I guess it was on that one. Here we go. I just wanted to go over the goal statements and make, and see if you had any edits to the wording in either the titles or the definitions that we had underneath them.
Councilmember Salmore, are you trying to put your hand up?
Yeah, I'm trying to put my hand up. I have one, I, you'd have to explain this sentence to me, and just like Councilman Wall was talking a little earlier, I think it just needs a little wordsmithing, because it just, maybe it's just me, but continually evaluate ways to improve equitable service delivery to community members with challenges to assessing service or whereas resources have not been invested recently. It kind of sounds like a two sentences in one, and I'd have to ask for a definition of it, because I could see it being senior services, or I can see it having delivery service of food from a grocery store. It's just a little different to me.
Yes, service delivery from the city's perspective would mean everything from providing utilities to getting a permit from the counter, getting access to recreation opportunities, applying for a job or a contract, and, you know, those, go ahead.
Could we say city services?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Because I know we have it up above, but it doesn't really say, it says levels of service, and being a council member, and I've got to ask the question, I think to a layperson reading it, they might not understand it as well, because continually elevate ways to improve equitable services, which are fair and impartial services, delivery to community members with challenging, challenges to assessing services. So, or, is it two different things? We're going to look at our service and continue to improve it, but we're also going to look at people who have challenges assessing our services, and then we're also looking at resources that we haven't invested in, and what would those be?
So, I think when we look at equity, we look at who cannot access a certain thing, right? And so, is, and is that accessibility issue because we've made it too difficult, because it's not, we're not providing multiple languages, because we only provide it online and people don't have access to the internet? Like, what are the different barriers that people are providing or having in accessing those services? And cost, obviously, is another one. I think this-
I guess, I, I get that part, and I'm not challenging what it means, I'm just challenging the sentence.
Okay, yeah.
Because like, if you were to leave, who would be able to interpret that?
Yeah.
And so, it's not a matter of not wanting it, it's just a matter of understanding the sentence.
Sure, no problem.
Maybe two sentences and a couple of additions of wording.
Yes.
Or, go ahead, Mayor Protam.
I was going to say, or maybe simplify the, the statement, but then put the details in the, in the work plan.
Mm-hmm.
Because I think there, there's already some, some detail behind that in the work plan that gives a little clarity to what the, I think the intent is, but maybe we can continue to fine tune that.
And the other question, sorry, are we talking about faucet technologies for June of 2032?
I'm sorry, what, which part of-
It's in the strategic plan. I was just going to say, when we put it all together, I'll bring it up then, but-
In this part, in this plan? This is just, yeah, this is all the same information, just sort of in a formatted document.
Oh, there's just one posted, and it has something about faucet technology for 2032?
Which page are you on?
It's like on page, I don't know, like 10 or 9. I was going to send you an email, it would be page 6.
You know, there might be, you might have an earlier version. We had a, a version online that had multiple pages, additional pages on it, that was just a template for the graphics we were using, so it doesn't really-
Okay, I thought maybe, but I thought, well, maybe there's something in 2032 that we're going to review.
No, no, I apologize for that.
Oh, no, it's not a big deal at all.
Any other thoughts just on the goal statements before we go into, or, or the objectives, and then we can go into the, the work plan?
Okay, Mayor Protam.
Anybody else?
I don't see any other hands going up.
Very good. Okay, so, overall, I thought you, you guys have done a great job of putting it all together and, and getting into the, the details of the wording and very little wordsmithing on, on this part of it. I think it, it looks great. There are two key areas that I did want to address. One is under growing our vibrant community, and it gets to the placemating, placemaking. And I know, I understand that we could say that it could be incorporated into various pieces of this, but I'd really like to call it out. I think placemaking and creating a sense of place, particularly in a growing community, particularly with us looking at the next 20 years and, and how we're going to grow, and the amount of growth, and the additional number of people that we're going to be needing to accommodate here in this area, creating a sense of place is critically important, and doing it well and doing it right is going to be very, very important for us. And I did have, actually, I have a very long statement, but I, I also tried to whittle it down a little bit to some sort of a statement, so it'd be under one, you know, A, B, or C, something, create quality places that adds visual interest and attracts activities like street festivals, pop-up activities, public art, food trucks, live entertainment and musical performances.
Could you email me that?
Yes, I, I can. And I, please note that I did not put water features in there, but that does not mean that we should not have water features.
We can add it later.
I'll, I'll, I mean, and, and on that note, I, I can't emphasize enough how important water is to creating a sense of place and a place that people love. And if we want to be a destination city, we need more water. On that note, moving on, just to give, I think that covers most of what I wanted to talk about there. Again, I, I think there are, I have a lot of ideas on specific examples or things or actions for the work plan, but that kind of covers the, the key statement I think is important for us to make. Then, under responsible governance, to ensure desired level of service. I know we, we talk about strive for cost efficiency and effectiveness in the statement, which, by the way, I like the statements underneath each of the goals. Well done on that. I think that really adds clarity to what we're trying to do in each of those, each of the four goals, and I like, I like what you've done there a lot. I do think, and I do think that we need to add, and I mentioned it last time, and I think you tried to incorporate it in, but I think we need to call it out specifically, identify efficiencies and opportunities to reduce the cost of government. We talk a lot about providing services, ensuring the proper level of service. We talk a lot about investing in systems, and that, the, doing all of that effectively, efficiently is important, but also especially recognizing, I'm going to get to it a little more in detail when we get to that section in the work plan, but recognizing, but on a higher level, recognizing the cost of government, where things are going, the increasing cost of everything, everywhere, and particularly looking at our neighbors and such, the challenges they're facing. I want to be in front of that as a council, but also to ensure, assure our community and our residents that we are doing everything possible to keep the cost of government as low as we can while delivering great services. And so, I think it's important for us to make, to show that we're doing the work, that we're making the effort to reduce costs where we can, while at the same time, providing the services. Again, I'll get into more detail when we get to the work plan, some additional, I should say, some additional thoughts when we get to the work plan, but I'm just saying that that's an important statement for us, for, for staff and for our residents to keep in mind as we're going forward.
Shall we move to the action plan, or any other thoughts on the goals first?
Go ahead, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, just, I guess, following up and kind of what I am hearing from Councilmember Wall, and would support kind of the first one in trying to be more, I think, intentional about calling out placemaking, I think that is a really helpful addition, and would love to see that incorporated. I think in terms of the cost of government, I think trying to balance, I, I guess for me, C does that, and I, maybe there's a way to strengthen that language in a way that kind of better addresses your concerns, but I guess I also want to be realistic in the, you know, I mean, the idea of reducing the cost of government at a time where all of the costs of things, to your point, continue to go up, whether that is, you know, the cost of labor, the cost of, you know, materials. I mean, I, I think, I also want to make sure we are setting goals that are, are realistic and that are congruent with all of our other goals. And so, I think, you know, the idea of engaging our community to ensure that, you know, we continue to maintain good financial health is, is a good goal, and maybe we can be a little bit more, I guess, intentional from my perspective in that regard, but I guess I, I would, I want to make sure that whatever we commit to in these goals are things that we can actively, ideally, deliver on to our community. So, I guess that would be my only additional feedback there.
Councilmember Salmore, did you have something?
Yes, I just wanted to, I agree with Councilman Wall on the, reducing the cost. I like where he was going with that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we can continue on.
Okay, so, we're in the action plan now, but we did have a, one slide here just about revising the vision statement for the strategic plan. So, last time, we proposed the final statement on this page, which is in blue, I'll make it a little bigger on the screen. The original is in the gray, and I provided just some examples from some of our neighboring cities, just so you could get an idea of kind of what others say, and there's, it's really hard to write a vision statement that isn't generic and points out what's special to our own city. I have to say, that is definitely a challenge. And I think we heard in our council retreat that our vision statement was so long that none of us were really able to repeat it in a succinct way or in a, in a complete way. So, we just were taking a stab at modifying it a little bit, and it's up to you whether you want to do that or not. Obviously, if you want to keep the original, that's up to you, but here are some examples for you.
So, the, the original is what we have right now?
Yes.
Well, go ahead, Councilmember, Mayor Protam Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll start off the conversation. I thought you did a great job in narrowing it down, which I know is extremely difficult because of the process we went through to arrive at the original statement that we, we have, which took a, a lot of work just to get it down to that, and still try and get the feel, incorporate everybody's input and get the feel for what we wanted, what our vision is for the community. But I think you've, you've done a great job in still hitting the highlights of exactly what we want to be when we grow up, and while recognizing that the details are in the goals. And I think the goals do a great job, and it's the substatements or the statements underneath of the goals really gets at each, at all the areas within the original statement. So, I think we're, we're covering, we're doing a great job of covering it all, but really focusing the, the statement, the vision statement itself, to, to exactly what, what we want to be, and I think it does a great job, so, well done.
The, the other cities, is, is that their whole vision statement, and really, it's not a part of one? Oh, goodness, some are real short.
Yeah, typically, vision statement should be something that we all can remember and repeat, and that we can apply, you know, immediately when we see an opportunity to do it. And that's, the new one, scroll down a little bit, the new one, I think, does that, that's what-
Yeah, it covers everything that is in the, and I remember getting it to that length, because it would have been paragraphs and paragraphs in the beginning, and then we got it down to that, and then now we were get down to two, two lines, which is great, but then I, I see one up there that is one line.
Yep.
I think it's up above, but that's okay.
And I think going back to the comprehensive plan for a minute, like, often, you know, you had the vision statement that you saw earlier tonight, and often there are pages of description of that vision in the comprehensive plan, which is your opportunity to really envision what the city looks like 20 years from now. But in this case, we're looking for something shorter that, you know, community, new community members, businesses, developers, when they're coming to town and they're interested in who we are, they can like, look at it quickly and get a feel for-
And if they want to read any, any more, they can, but they get the gist of what we're, what they need, and, and that's what I like. Because I, I don't think people want to know everything on the first visit.
All right.
We have a fire hose statement.
Okay, and I'm going to have a hard time scrolling on this page. So, is this big enough for you all? I'll try to make it a little, no, it's kind of, okay.
It's hard.
All right. Okay, so, I am happy to skip to wherever you want. There's no need for me to read all of these goals and actions for you again, but we did try to update a couple that are in red from just the minimal conversation we had last time, but happy to hear any thoughts you have.
So, if anyone has any questions about any of this, just, well, did you have your hand up? Oh, I, I see Councilmember Salmore.
Sorry, I'm turning my thing off because I have to sit so close to read it. I just want to say, I like this presentation. It's really well done. I was looking at our other one, but I like, because you have the actual dates in here and comparing the other cities' goals or their, you know, their mission statement. I just wanted to give a, a shout out to how this is put together, but no, I, I'm liking what I'm seeing.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Mayor Protam Wall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Agreed. I, I, again, I, I said it with the original vision and, and goals, and will echo Councilmember Salmore's thoughts on the action plan as well. I mean, I think the, it is all very well laid out, very well done, very comprehensive, yet high enough level that it's not too in the weeds, but, but I'm going to get in the weeds on what we do have. In addition to being a great job, I have some additional thoughts.
No problem.
One is, so, you know, I'll do it by page, and then, and then, so if anybody else has some additional thoughts or conversation on each individual pages, because otherwise, I could just get going and it'll take a little while. All right, so on 1A- All right, so on 1A, I like, I like the action steps. The only thing I would add is develop and implement.
Oh, for each of the action steps? Okay.
Yeah. Update the comprehensive plan, don't, that's good, but then it's, yeah, develop and implement middle housing plan, develop and implement a housing action plan. I'm not sure that those are necessarily, how much different those should be, really to me it would be develop a housing action plan and the middle housing plan will be part of the action plan. And then development code updates. Just, I know there's a lot of code updates that need, will need to be done, but just to call out, want to make sure that we are addressing ADUs, cottage houses, the transition zones, RS 4800, potentially PUDs depending on what impact all the other, the comp plan and the, the new middle housing laws have on our PUDs.
Yes, I think this was intended to incorporate the comprehensive plan requirements in the middle housing requirements. Certainly there are other things that we would like to update as well, but to your point, it was primarily to get the code in compliance with those two plans.
Yes, and, yeah, and that's great and it could very well be intended under development code updates, but I want to be on the record for calling those out specifically that those are things we do need to address. Under 2B, I'm sorry, 1B, I like, I like a lot where we're going. I'm going to get more into this budget for an FTE to support this work, going to get into that in the responsible governance section where there's, I mean, there's about 10 new positions we're creating throughout this work plan, the action steps of the work plan. And I think we need to be careful about, I'll touch on that again later, but this one I think we, this is one we've, we've already have on board, but it was through ARPA dollars. So it's a matter of basically finding funding to continue this position. So I, so I, what I'd like to do is somehow recognize that we need to continue funding this position and that is a goal, an agreed goal, I think from all of us, but I'm concerned about calling that, calling, say, budget for an FTE to support this work, rather rephrase it to say, continue ensuring-
More pay, more nebulous.
Yeah. Basically, continue ensuring that somebody is coordinating our and managing and organizing our events. You'll understand why I said that later. Then 1C, I, again, like everything there, I think we're, two things I like to call out, one is, and I think it's, we're planning on it, but obviously, but one is implement the economic development strategy. And another is marketing, marketing, branding, et cetera. We don't actually say that in the action steps. We're planning on doing it, we might as well, as long as we're going to do it, take credit for it, right? So that's, that's it for the first page. Second page, 1D, I'm assuming under create relationships, that is supposed to be economic alliance of Snoke County?
Oh, yes. Sorry about that.
Economic development.
Yeah. Very good. 1E, create inviting active and safe business districts. Oh, so here, under the action steps, one is code enforcement, again, something we're doing, let's put it in the action steps and take credit for it. But that is a key piece of creating, inviting, active and safe business districts. And then, again, you'll understand why later, but instead of increase police staffing levels, I would say ensure sufficient police staffing levels. And maybe instead of funds, you know, continue, and I'm not sure that the social embedded worker, embedded social worker is the appropriate, necessarily appropriate place. Here it is addressed later and I think it, we do want to address it, but I'm not sure that this is the place to do it.
Okay.
Good there?
Yes.
And then on, obviously incorporating in the create quality places that add visual interest, I've got lots of action steps for us there. Good so far?
Yes.
On 2A, incorporate identified efficiencies and opportunities to reduce the cost of government. And what I mean by that is really looking at, I mean, we have to rely on you guys, on staff, and you guys need to rely on your department heads and department heads need to rely on middle management, middle management needs to rely on the people on the ground that are actually doing the work. We need to get that feedback. We need to, I, we need to be asking the people on the ground that are doing the work, how can we make things more efficient and more cost effective and get their feedback and give rewards? I mean, I, let's, I say, let's, you know, give some sort of a bonus to people that are able to save us some money. But anyway, that's getting again more into the weeds than we necessarily need to get, but my, I guess my point is let's be working to get, get everybody on board because the immediate reaction is I don't want to change anything, right? Nobody, no, we've got to get people out of their comfort zone to be able to find ways to reduce the cost of government. They're there, I mean, we're not spending $500 on a hammer like federal government does, but there are ways that we can do things more efficiently while still delivering the same quality level of service. We just need to figure out how to find them and kind of drive that message down. Regionalizing services, that's another area that I think, you know, we had a great conversation on Tuesday, I thought it went great and I think there's a lot of potential opportunities for us to be working together with our partners to help us reduce the costs by jointly working together and provide, for instance, vehicles, not everybody needs, not everybody in the South County region needs a striping, a striper, striping vehicle, whatever, right?
$280,000.
And each of us are providing, are having to come up with software for payroll and for, and vehicles and other equipment that we don't, that we could find ways to reduce the cost of, by joining together and, anyway, there's just, there's opportunities there. We should be exploring them. And so that's, that's another area, so that would be another action step that we can put under identify efficiencies, reduce costs, right? You know, and then looking at, so then, having said that, getting to 2A, and the first one, two, three, four, five is all about adding a staff member. And I think that's premature to say that we're going to be able to do that in this budget cycle, all of it. And so I think we want to be a little more generic, I would combine all of those first six there and say some, something along the lines of review and continue to monitor and consider staffing levels to ensure provision of quality services, to maintain quality levels of service or whatever, desired qualities, levels of service. But, you know, rather than, again, something that's achievable, we can't, we can't commit, I mean, these are desired things. If department heads want these staff positions now for this year, as I've said in the past, I'm all for it as long as they're able to do it within their current budget. So find a way to, you know, reassign, look at your staff resources, look at the regional collaboration, look at, you know, what's essential that we're doing, are there ways to, to shift some of your costs around within your department to be able to achieve what you want to achieve? But when we talk about cost of government, adding staff in the next six-year financial forecast is, and considering, you know, and we've added a number of positions already, we've increased salaries and we need it to. I am fully on board with that, but we need to recognize the financial costs of that over the six-year financial forecast and what the impact is and how that impacts our budget and how, and recognize, and again, we need to take a look at what's going on around us and the dire positions that other governments are in because they waited too long to take a look at this stuff. And that's what we need to avoid. We can't find, because we will end up having to reduce the levels of service and we don't want to, in places and ways we don't want to. So let's do it upfront now, save ourselves the pain and difficulty of doing that later and be able to show our citizens when we, when and if we do need to go to them asking for additional funding for any number of things we know we're going to need to at some point for, let's just take the rec pavilion as a perfect example of something we know and that's going to cost a lot. And it's going to cost our citizens, our residents, a lot out of their pocketbook. And there's only so many times they're going to be willing to do that. So we need to make sure that they know that we're doing our part to keep the cost of government as low as possible going forward. That said, again, that doesn't necessarily, there are positions, there are additional positions that we're going to need to fund in this budget. As an example, the events coordinator, the economic development manager. I think there was another, there was the, another one that I'll get to later, which is later in here, which, which I think is probably necessary and will, that I think we're, but again, be, rather than calling them out in the action steps, specific positions, I think it's better that we don't call out those specifics positions at this time and call out the services that we're trying to provide in the action steps. Does that make sense? Okay.
Also, how would you think about shared, shared staffing so that, because each, each department may not need a full-time person?
Do you have your microphone on?
Oh, I'm, sorry, I should be speaking into it. Each department may not need a full-time person. I was looking up there going, there are certain, certain ones that can be shared and if they, if two or three departments shared a person, that might give them incentive to do other things within their department. But we don't, we don't want to make it sound like we don't want them to have extra help, but we, but we need to stay within our budget because otherwise we're not going to have a budget.
Yeah.
That's it. Go ahead. You have more?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Not on that section, but I-
No.
Yes, exactly. That's, I guess, the kind of thought process that- Sorry. Agreed. That's the kind of thought process I think we need to be going through and is, you know, getting creative, getting out of our comfort zone, getting out of, this is the way we've done things and we've always done things, but, you know, can we share positions with, within inner departments? Can we share positions or programs or whatever regionally? I mean, there's, there's opportunities there, we just need to find them. Okay, so 2B, I'm assuming that that's supposed to be and ensure sufficient?
Are you in the goal or the action step?
I'm sorry, almost all of this is action steps because the goals we've already pretty much agreed to, right?
Oh, yeah, I see, I see there.
That is-
Sufficient.
Sufficient, okay, great. And I was, I underlined the, under 2C, under the task force, help identify options to finance, develop and maintain quality services, infrastructure and amenities, because I almost wanted to call that out in it, in it, under the identification efficiencies and reduced costs, but I, I don't, there might be some, I mean, I like it the way it is. But that, I highlight that because that is what we need them to do and we need to do in every, take every opportunity to do that exact same thing as well as, oh, that, I guess the other thing I was going to say is have them take a look at staff, things like staffing, you know, levels potentially or see if there's other ways that they can help, provide input in helping us reduce costs in addition to all of that.
Okay.
Next page, 2E. So this is one area, okay, so this is an area that, I see, maintain public health and safety through the police, fire and emergency preparedness services. So this is where, again, I would say that we do want to highlight the social embedded social, the embedded social worker, but I would, instead of increase, ensure. And then, this is another area for the regional services that I, we had a great conversation the other day and I'm looking forward to exploring that more, but I think there's a lot of opportunity and we should be potentially calling that out in some sort of a way with the action steps as far as providing regional services, addressing public safety, criminal justice, mental health, affordable and temporary housing. There's, again, those are some of those challenging issues, you know, basically the social issues and services that we can't handle on our own, but together as a South County region, we have to, we need to address these challenges and the way to do that is through the collaboration with our surrounding jurisdictions, things, and utilizing things like the Linwood Criminal Justice Center that's coming online and the VOA Linwood Neighborhood Center. Those are the kinds of programs that we need to be turning to, we should, I'd like to see us calling that out in our action steps. Also, under 2E, the first three are actually, and I don't have a problem with this, but I did want to note that they are mentioned in other areas as well. And I don't know if we want to or if that's intentional, I don't care either way, I can see an argument either way for, only including in one place or including in both, I just wanted to highlight that it is and if we want to keep it that way, that's fine.
Okay. We're open to whatever your suggestions are. And I can see the value of not duplicating, so.
Yeah.
But also, I think sometimes we were just looking at like showing that we're doing something in a certain area.
Yeah, right, exactly. I mean, I'm good either way, I'm, I'm fine showing that we're doing things, then things that we're doing are covering multiple goals. On the other hand, be more efficient.
Yeah.
And anyway, either way, whatever you think is best, I just noted it. Okay, here's another one that we just- Okay, here's another one that we just, uh, we, we mentioned the embedded social worker. Um, again, either way, I'm good, including it, not including it twice. Uh, develop and use CIP. C O P, cost of government?
Oh, capital improvement.
C O G, what is CIP?
Oh, capital improvement plan.
Oh, oh, okay. Develop and use the capital improvement.
We can not use that acronym.
Oh, okay. Yeah, maybe spell that out, but that's, got it. Okay. Moving along. I swear I'm going to get done before 10:00 PM, we're not, we're not going to have to worry about, all right, so.
[inaudible].
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm almost done, actually. Three A. Um, here, okay, ensure that new planning and design projects, I think we just strike our resource well enough to, I think it's just additional words, so getting to the same thing. Ensure that new planning and design projects have strong communication and community engagement plans and consultants.
Sounds good.
Um, here is, okay, so here are some additional action steps that I can see us incorporating that we're, again, we're already either A, using, or B, intending to use, but when we proactively engage community in infrastructure improvements and other plans to accommodate growth, oh, was this, where did I want this? Continue to adapt and update, okay. Well, so just, it, it, somewhere in here, for action steps, under, uh, one of the goals to inform and engage the community, utilizing D E I, or D E I C, cops and clergy, community ambassadors, and, um, ensuring that we're identifying, utilizing every, you know, uh, other potential options for being able to, um, engage community.
Okay.
Oh, and identify, for instance, as I mentioned earlier, as far under the con plan, is, you know, looking at best practices and things that other cities around us that are doing and have incorporated recently. I mean, we, we're all striving to, um, improve our efforts to engage the community, there's a lot of great ideas out there, so we ought to take a look at what others are doing. Okay, and then, okay, and here to add community engagement staff. So this is where we, um, and I think, so I guess, here's another area where, um, are they, is that community engagement staff going to help us create the night market?
Uh.
Yeah, see, you, you, you know, you. You know what the right answer might be. Right? So here, here's another area that I would, I mean, I, absolutely, we need to, um, do more to engage community. I'm not sure that I'd call out add a community engagement staff member specifically, but that may be what we need to do and I'm very interested in having that conversation related to the budget this cycle rather than putting that off for the future. But I'm assuming the community engagement staff would also be kind of like a volunteer coordinator and somebody that can help plug in all these great people we've been interviewing and need to find a place for and get them plugged in to help us create live entertainment and pop-up art and, and things like that. I mean, that's the kind of community engagement person I want on staff sooner than later to create that sense of place that we need in our, that we want, we're wanting to create in our community. And so along those lines, under the next one, implement new policies to offer incentives for community members to participate, participate in civic activities. Um, I, I would actually use the word consider or incorporate that, consider, incorporate that concept and consider it under the secure additional resources to broaden communication, et cetera. Um, I, I think that is actually a, we've actually done that program with Puget Sound Regional Council. And so I'm familiar with it, I'm guessing the rest of the council is probably not as familiar with what this type of a program looks like or is about. And before we incorporate it in as a specific action step, I think we need to have that conversation. And so to be able to allow space for it and, and have that conversation, I'd say let's generalize that and put it under the other action step underneath that, the secure additional resources to, and just showing that it is another potential way to help engage community. And, you know, another one is, you know, there's a lot of great ideas here that we should be looking at and considering, but there's also an order to it. I mean, for instance, I would say that getting a community engagement staff member is a higher priority and have that person be working with the community and identify, well, that's another area that, but I think they meant by the identify, um, we need to identify who our vulnerable communities are and be able to have, I mean, the school district probably has, is a great start. We've kind of been talking about that through the entire ARPA process, um, but never really actually taken the step to do anything. And I think that the community engagement person is a great, potentially, assuming that we are able to fund that, um, is a great role, that that's another thing that we should, we should have them working on is engaging, is, is working with our partners, the cops and clergy program, the school district and others, to be able to, um, identify who the vulnerable groups are that we need to communicate with so that we know what their, we have a better idea of what their actual needs are, and therefore that will help us under the identify, uh, the secure additional resources to broaden communication, engagement efforts, expand outreach, uh, offer more translation, interpretation and graphic design support and more frequent updates to the city materials. Knowing who our audience is will help us know what resources we need to provide and where we need to provide those additional, uh, fun, the additional funding to, so we have a better direction. So one comes before the other, if that makes sense.
Yes, and, and your earlier part of that statement, were you talking about the incentives we need to follow? Okay. Um, that, and just FYI, we, we have that policy in place because we were anticipating we might need to use it during the comprehensive plan process and we, but we haven't rolled it out yet, so. But yeah, thank you for those comments, we'll consider how to organize them.
Great. All right. Then.
Councilmember Sonmore, did you want?
I just wanted to follow up, can you tell me about that incentive program?
Yeah, it follows state guidance about, um, trying to engage especially, um, low-income community members who typically wouldn't be able to attend a meeting or, um, maybe participate in a commission in, in some cases. But in order for them to engage in the civic process, they might need to leave work early, have childcare that they couldn't afford, so how do we engage with people in our community that we're not reaching, um, and encourage them to participate? And so the state has come up with some guidance on how to do that through incentives. Um, and it's basically like a gift, it could, it could be in the form of a gift card for $25 or $50 or something like that to, um, provide people that incentive to participate.
And, sorry, it's new to me, so, um, would the money come from the city or the, money's coming from the state?
It comes from the city.
For, yeah. Oh, good. Oh, from the city, did you say?
From the city, yes, yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
And in the state, if they implemented it, then they would, might pay for it, but.
They just came up with their own guidance.
I heard somebody laugh really hard.
Yeah. Um, but certainly we have been rolling out translation, interpretation and thinking about how to graphically communicate things better that is not dependent on language as much to, um, communicate with our folks. So these are things we're already starting to experiment with, but we just don't have a lot of expertise and resources to do that, so.
Right. And, oh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, um, you just mentioned resources and I'm seeing all this work and Brian and I am appreciating your comments. Um, my issue was maybe adding like a third column, the price, and do we have people to staff it? So I think sometimes we have to manage our expectations on, um, having, you know, enough people to get all this work done because I, I see these lines going from 2024 to 29 and it's, it's a lot of workload there.
Uh, councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I appreciate councilmember Sonmore's, um, comment and also, uh, Mayor Protem's kind of continued, um, you know, kind of diving into what, you know, the intention behind, you know, looking for ways to save, uh, on, on costs. I fully support us looking for, for ways to save every opportunity we can and also would echo, you know, councilmember Sonmore in that we have a lot of goals before us and we have a, I think, long history of being really attuned to the cost of services. And so this is not like the first time we are having that conversation as a council and so want to recognize that we have a lot of years of asking staff to look for cost savings and for, um, asking staff to do, you know, more with less. And so I, I think also recognizing that at some point there may be, yes, I think to councilmember Sonmore's point, like, things we can do with more resources and things we can't, and then I think we have to have that conversation. So I, I guess I just want to make sure that staff understand that, that, that we recognize that and so, um, particularly if we are starting to adjust, you know, specificity around what staff have presented in terms of staffing that they think are needed to accomplish these things, I think coming back to us to help us understand the impact to, to some of these goals as, as laid out is, is a helpful conversation for us to, to have as a council.
Yeah. And, and, and there is a reason that we are in far better financial shape than other communities are and that's because we have done a great job throughout the years of, of watching our budget. And, and so recognition, so absolutely, recognition needs to be given to folks that have been helping us maintain and keep high, keep a, a higher level of, um, you know, standard, whatever, helping us do the job that we need to do in a cost-efficient way. That, and there's always time to re-review where we're at and I guess that's what we're asking is, great job, thank you, let's take another look and keep tightening that belt where we can. And, but we're saying that, recognizing, and, and the reason I'm saying, I'm so, I think it's so important for us to be trying to find those cost reductions is exactly because we, we have some big dreams and we're, and, and we know, we recognize that we need to fund those big dreams somehow. And, um, part of that is trying to shift some resources around, but part of it is needing to come up with new resources, additional resources. Part of the way that we're going to get additional resources is through economic development, but part of it may be through, I mean, again, for the Rec Pavilion, it's going to mean going to our voters, our residents and asking for them to chip in and help out. And as we're going to find out with Main Street, I mean, we, we're going to need some, to do some additional things there and put some, find some additional ways to invest in our Main Street. And there's going to be a lot of other things and, that we want to do. And I'm still want to fund more water features and I'm willing to pay for the maintenance You have that on record?
All right.
All right, so, um, so we've got the, uh, all right, so at any rate, I, getting back to the add a community engagement staff, I, um, I am fully supportive of doing that in this budget cycle. I, I bet again, I think I want to, I'd like to be cautious about saying exactly add a community, add, add staff, um, getting back to the other, the other areas, previous conversation. Um, oh, and I'm sorry, and then I did want to, yeah, follow up on the incentives for community members to participate in civic activities. I, I'm saying that not because I'm opposed to it, um, but because I, um, again, because like, as councilmember Sonmore pointed out, I mean, we don't, we, we do not have any background on it. I think it's a great idea, again, PSRC has adopted a policy on that and is utilizing that and so we can see what they're doing and how they're doing it as an example of, of how, how we might consider, things we might consider to be able to utilize it. I just, rather than call it out specifically, I think we want to incorporate it in the other area. Anyway, that's, that's it on that area. Then under three D, the improved broadband access, um, potential actions step, could, could a potential action step be providing access to the internet in public buildings such as City Hall and the library? For instance, the library already does, right? But is that, I mean, can't, is there?
We've rolled out a, a beta program, basically, which has an internal staff Wi-Fi system that is not, um, accessible, it's password protected. Eventually, we're going to get to a spot where we have, uh, that fully implemented and then we'll have an open network for anybody to access.
Okay, so in other words, it makes, we're already going that direction, let's take credit for it in our action steps.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, moving on to environmental sustainability and resilience. For B, I have, let's see, create conference of citywide bicycle pedestrian plan and implement the priorities of the conference citywide bicycle. Oh, I, I just, I'm, so on the citywide bicycle pedestrian plan, yes, can't we just say that in one, say, create and implement?
Yes.
And then I know there's somewhere that we can put in something about, I've already mentioned water features, um, night market and a skybar.
A what? A skybar?
The list is getting bigger.
Yeah, uh, so I, actually, believe it or not, that is it. Um, great, that said, I mean, again, the great, really, really great job putting this together, really appreciate it. I think we're, um, we are heading in the right direction finally. Um, really excited about where this is going and how this is coming together. Um, I, I do, I do want to take a moment to jump back briefly and we'll, I'm looking forward to further conversations about the placemaking, creating a sense of place, but I think there's, um, I really would like to actually set a, have a set aside some time for council discussion and figuring out ways that we can, some additional action steps we can, uh, add to that, uh, placemaking, creating a sense of place because, you know, we, we can, we, we, for those of us that went to AWC, the A Davis C Conference, you know, we heard some great, great, great ideas about how to incorporate water features and the importance of water features, but public art in general. I mean, for instance, utilizing parking lots, intersections, our parks, there are a lot of opportunities that we should be taking advantage of, uh, helping create a sense of place. And I just, I, I can't emphasize, and I know we all recognize the importance of doing that, and, um, I, I want to make sure that we're spending a lot of time focusing on how we go about doing that intentionally in our community. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll, 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 what's the term, Rick, I'll rest, I'll, I'll put my, mic drop.
Oh, dear. I'm happy if, to hear any other comments or suggestions on any part of the plan. Anyone else?
No, I don't see any hands going up.
All right. Well, and just wanted to kind of quickly just go over the format that we're playing with, this needs work still, obviously, but, um, I just wondered what you thought about the, the more graphically designed version of this. We were trying to make it four pages, but I think we preferred the white space over cramming a bunch of text onto, uh, a lower number of pages, but, um, just a high level overview of those goal statements. And then each page has its, um, the goals and objectives with a few graphics that depict what we're talking about. Um, and the, uh, other one is. other one is, I'm lost, maybe it's still here, oh, here we go, here we go. So we can keep the Excel version if you like that action plan, or we're, we could try to make it a little nicer, but whatever's easier for you to look at for the action plan.
I have no feedback on that. I gave all of my content.
Yeah.
You can, you can design it and make it as pretty as possible.
All right, Councilmember Sonmore? You're muted. We can't hear you.
I enjoyed reviewing, thank you, sorry about that, I enjoyed reviewing your plan the way you had it set up, but I think you're right, in this aspect, this graphic goes better within here, and that's kind of what I was asking about earlier, about that template, because when Brian and Doug and I worked on the goal vision for about a year and a half, we were looking at Portland's, and theirs is a lot like this, and to me, it was so much visually more pleasing, and we looked about, at about 10 or 15 different plans, and I, I think this one is very pleasing and inviting to look at for a very visual person, I think it's very, I like, really enjoy it.
Thank you. All right. We don't vote or do anything tonight.
We'll bring it back after we've incorporated your suggestion, or Mayor Protem's suggestions, and have another discussion and make sure we get to where council wants to be.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, if we have any follow-ups after reflection, can we send them your way?
Sure.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, are we done with this? Then we will move on to public comment. I don't see anyone here.
No one has signed up in person and no one pre-registered to give comment online, and the couple of comments we received via email have been forwarded to you.
Okay. All right, so review the next meeting agenda, I didn't see one in there.
I hope we don't have one.
Oh, that's right, that's why we don't have it in there, because we're skipping a week.
Yeah, I had to think that too, July 4th.
Okay, so now the council comments, does anyone have any council comments? I have, I have just a couple of little things here. Waste Management now has cameras, because I got camered, and they charged me extra, so. Yes, well, my son put the recycle, well, he, he put, he was really good at, at, at taking the big boxes and getting it small and putting it inside, but if you have it sticking out of, of, you know, it's gotta fit, and all this time we've been putting it, sticking out, right? Because we've done that, and now, yeah, they charge $4 and something cents for that. And then, and then also, and I haven't been caught on this one, but when you, when, if you have things that you're not supposed to have in your, in your garbage, the cameras are showing what you're dumping, what the, when they put the garbage cans in. So, just thought I'd, I'd let the public know that, that there are cameras now.
There wasn't that part of our contract where they charged $25 if you put something in that, like, in recycle, if you put in, I don't know, regular garbage, they would do $25 extra, because I got charged extra, and it was just about this much too full, the bag got caught up, then I got charged extra, and it wasn't that much, but I heard in our contract, I thought they were going to start charging people $25 extra if they mixed some of their garbage.
Okay, well, I, I don't remember that, but it could be. Anyways, but we're, we're all getting charged extra, so we all have to do our best to, to do what Waste Management wants us to do. The other is, when we were talking earlier about Wi-Fi, we only have a choice of Comcast and Ziply in our city, will we ever get a third choice ever? Because it seems like Comcast is not loved, and neither is Ziply.
So, yeah, if a provider approaches us, we also have Frontier, actually, but there are only 55 video subscribers within the city limits, a very, very small number.
They left and became Ziply.
Yeah, well, are they, I can't remember, there's been so many acquisitions, they're very possibly, they could be Ziply, but the, the number of subscribers for that service is incredibly low.
Okay.
Vast majority of people are on Comcast.
All right. And then, just, you don't have to answer now, but maybe we can let us know, when, when does the, the tax for the, the City Hall, the bond, for the, when does that end? Because I, I'm thinking about if we even think about going for a pavilion, we probably should wait for this bond to be done, but if it's gonna be like a long time, we can't wait that long, then, then the public might have to pay twice, and I really hate to see that happen, so, just, just wanted to know.
I can find out, and I will make sure council has that.
All right, thank you. And that's it, anyone else? I think we all want to just go home. All right, then I will adjourn the meeting, thank you.